Okay, good morning. We're here for a presentation of the budget of 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hart, would you like to read the budget message?
2022 Lackawanna County Budget Funded Accomplishments. Just as the phoenix rises from the ashes from an unexpected occurrence, so too has our community. With the turning of the calendar to 2022, Lackawanna County slowly began its recovery and restart from the safeguards put into place when the pandemic hit two years ago. Despite the variants and other related maladies, the commissioners and staff began to get back to the business of business. Economic development activities, the long-awaited reassessment, family activities, the July 4th celebration, community art projects, and a host of other programs were scheduled to reset a policy of normalcy but with safety in mind. During the pandemic, the commissioner's main goal was to save lives through testing, vaccination clinics, and education. During January and February, space was rented in the Steentown Movie Complex for a makeshift testing and vaccine distribution site. Contracts were approved with local pharmacy to provide vaccinations for the homebound. Regular and booster shots were also provided to the government center for staff. One of the first pieces of legislation coming out of the COVID freeze brought an end to nearly 60 years of lopsided tax rates. On March 2nd, 2022, the majority commissioners passed a motion authorizing a property reassessment. On May 18th of this year, the majority commissioners approved a $5.1 million contract with Tyler Technologies to handle this project. Manpower was added to the assessors' office to get more people into the field, tracking land, buildings, residences, and businesses to include on the tax rolls. To explain the process and alleviate concerns, the county and Tyler conducted three in-person meetings throughout the area and one virtual. The Tax Claim Bureau received approval to incorporate a $35 registration fee for all county tax sales. This will provide an opportunity to qualified bidders prior to the sales and to also help defray administrative costs. Economic development has always been on the forefront of the commissioner's agenda. Expanding the tax base, creating jobs, and diversifying the business base remain top To help get businesses rolling again, the Recovery Loan Program was amended to include operations. Another program created was Get Connected, an e-commerce activity for all types of services, sales, and operations without person-to-person contact. The American dream is owning a home. The county's economic development department lent a hand in the process by collaborating with Neighbor Works to provide assistance to first-time homebuyers with their down payment and closing costs. The area's nonprofit sector took a huge hit in operating capital during the pandemic. To help them, the county's nonprofit COVID-19 Response Grant Program provided $1.1 million to 56 organizations utilizing ARPA funds. Also, several redevelopment assistance capital program grants were prepared to further assist organizations and businesses with the necessary funding for large-scale job creation projects. Several multimodal grants for new bridges and road repairs were also done along with the longstanding community reinvest grants. The spring allotment funded 27 projects for over $100,000. Human services form the core of county government. It is the reason for being in business, to serve the needs of families, the elderly, youth, and those battling addiction, anxiety, or mental disorders. In early 2022, the county received notification of its share of the opioid settlement. A total of $9.7 million will be used to offer various initiatives and treatment for recovery. The county also entered into a sales agreement to purchase an ultra-modern building in downtown Scranton for $5 million to house its Department of Health and Human Services. Along with the state designation, this combination will form the perfect arrangement to care for people and serve as a vital resource for information on how to combat viruses and other maladies. Being independent is vitally important to older adults, but sometimes they need a little help from a family member when living alone. The Area Agency on Aging addressed this by collaborating with Johnson College, a local manufacturer and community agencies, on a very innovative solution: the Elder Cottage Housing Opportunity, also known as the Echo Units. These standalone homes can be placed on the property of a family member with arrangements for utilities and other necessities. It's a win-win for everyone. Strengthening and enhancing the recreation and leisure amenities at the county's four parks was another highlight of the past year. The Scranton Ballet Theater once again held an outdoor performance in the idyllic confines of Covington Park. Consultants were enlisted to recommend upgrades and safety measures for McDade Park and the Coal Mine Tour. Other contracts were approved for general recreation needs and a new McDade Pool and Splash Pad. Grants were prepared and submitted for $1 million for the McDade Pool and $400,000 for the park's splash pad. A contract was awarded for Wi-Fi upgrades and video cameras installation at McDade Park. The safety of any community is vitally important for its overall quality of life. The commissioners are well aware of this and provided the necessary finances to accomplish that. The county received a counterterrorism grant for training, supplies, and manpower for top-flight protection. The government center has the latest badge access technology to enable staff to work after hours and on weekends in a safe environment regardless of the personnel on duty. Keeping Mother Earth pristine has also been a priority. Grants up to $1,000 were available to municipalities for electronic recycling, keeping the roadsides and wooded areas litter-free. The heart and soul of any areas are fed by arts and culture, and Lackawanna County is no different. The pandemic hit this segment very hard, causing some entities to cease operations. The Arts and Culture Department did its share by providing COVID grants to organizations totaling over $36,000. Its traditional program and project grants were also distributed to longstanding and new organizations. 29 program grants were given out totaling $185,000 as well as project stipends amounting to $80,000. Several community art and mural projects were announced to beautify the area, stately buildings, and green space. A design contest, the Penn Avenue Mural Project, was initiated to brighten up the back of the government center to showcase the area's industrial history. Beautify the Building was organized to warm up the interior of the building with a variety of mediums created by local artists. The IT group has always been on the cutting edge of technology with state-of-the-art systems and equipment. That trend continued with advanced workflow management programs. The department also maintains stringent network security regulations to protect the county's operating infrastructure and securely store sensitive system-wide documents. The county also redesigned its website. The Color From New Look provides individuals from across the globe easier navigation to find the information they need along with up-to-date data on community events and easy-to-complete request forms. Along those lines, safeguarding the confidentiality of one's vote is imperative in today's environment. An election security grant was approved for the voter registration office, providing programs, training, and other resources for voter confidentiality. Our nation's and communities' veterans are the reason for our freedoms we enjoy daily. They fought to end injustice worldwide, many making the ultimate sacrifice. Now it is our turn to give back. The commissioners did so with two important pieces of legislation. They have passed the real estate tax exemptions for non-wartime veterans and surviving spouses who served and became injured or disabled. A real estate tax exemption to the surviving spouse of those service personnel killed in the line of duty was also approved. Our debt position. The county has been able to mitigate its annual expenditures for debt service by taking advantage of favorable interest rates when possible. The county will continue to be diligent and also seek other opportunities to restructure its long-term debt. The financial policies of Lackawanna County for 2023. In 2023, the administration will again be conservative and demonstrate fiscal responsibility, restraint, and management when addressing the county's financial stability. The administration will continue its commitment to addressing the constant challenges facing county government on numerous fronts, especially in the area of its workforce. Personnel-related expenses such as salary, wages, and health care compromise 69.55% of the county's general fund budget. Important features of this budget. The 2023 general fund budget includes no property tax increase. Many man-hours went into the preparation of the county's '23 fiscal blueprint. Its goal is service to our 216,000 residents. The budget also reflects no cuts in programs that our communities and people need. The budget also contains provisions for our parks, human service programs, aging initiatives, environment, and spraying for gypsy moss and black fires while also monitoring other pests. We continue to meet the challenges of an ever-changing society by doing more with less in a fiscally responsible manner. It is vital to secure public input on this financial plan. The budget hearings are the perfect venue for residents to provide the commissioners with ideas that they can review and implement where possible to help cut expenses further and to generate additional revenue. The cost to run county government and its various programs is substantial. A prime example is the prison. A great deal of revenue is annually expended for staff, programs, medical treatment, supplies, and other ancillary services. This is part of our mission, and we will continue to do so efficiently as possible. Along those lines, the county was adversely affected by the pandemic, just as other businesses were. In both 2020 and 2021, due to the reduction of revenue from department fees, hotel tax, our parks and attractions, and special events, the county experienced a significant shortfall in finances. Expenses soared during the period at the prison and other departments along with increases in contract obligations and general operations. Unexpected emergencies also impacted the county's fiscal situation. The county is focused on recovering from this hit. While it did not raise taxes for 2023, the administration will do its due diligence to reduce spending even further before this budget is passed. It is intent on finding solutions to the overall deficit and to curb future shortfalls in revenue. Reasons for major financial policy expenditures and revenue changes from the 2022 budget. Due to the continued pressure from shrinking federal and state funding, collective bargaining, wage and benefit increases, and rising law enforcement costs, the county's 2023 budget will exceed the 2022 budget. During 2022, the county was able to capitalize on a significant surplus from its debt service fund. Since the county reduced the debt service fund surplus, the county will need to transfer additional funds from the general fund to the debt service fund for 2023. As previously noted, the human services area continues to be the main priority of the programs offered by the county government. In addition to that sector, emergency response, the court system, and other vital functions will comprise the majority of the county's 2023 expenditures. Budget overviews. The 2023 general fund budget totals $150,794,713. The 2023 debt service budget totals $19,491,313. The 2023 special purpose funds budget totals $86,428,14.
Public comment. Joan, you have any questions?
I'm the only one here.
You're the only one here. You're it.
Representing Lackawanna County.
Joan Hodawana, Scranton. Okay, I understand I only have three minutes, right? And that's why I gave you the written stuff. I looked at the budget worksheet, your budget message, and the Times article on "No Tax Hike in County Budget." These are my comments and questions. First, the Times article states that the general fund budget totals almost $150.8 million, about $5.1 million more than 2022. But that figure of $5.1 million is based on your 2022 adopted budget, not the 2022 estimated amount. If you use the latter figure, the difference is actually $10.7 million. You're now talking about a 7.7% increase in projected expenses for 2023. Next, according to your budget message, personnel expenses, which salaries, wages, and health care, comprise 69.55% of the county's general fund budget net of tax transfers out. Last year, that figure was 65.77% for an increase of 3.78%. This is not a sustainable trend for future budgets. Next, the message also states that the budget "reflects no cuts in programs that our communities and people need," and that "the human services area continues to be the main priority of the programs offered by the county government." That same sentence was in last year's budget message. So I need you to please expand on these fund totals. Area Agency on Aging, a negative $98,155. These are fund totals. The Department of Health and Human Services, a negative $42,322. 9/11, a negative $257,324. Automation/Improvement, negative $4,500. And the Workforce Development Board, a negative $11,165. Next, the total for general fund expenses is found on page 50 of the worksheet. The total for general fund revenues can be found by subtracting the fund balance, $25.7 million, that's on page 1, from total revenues, $168.5 million on page 30. But where are the revenue and expense totals for the special purpose funds? Not on page 50. According to your budget message, the special purpose fund budget totals $86,428,14. Why aren't the revenue and expense totals included on the budget worksheet? And finally, on page 50 of the budget worksheet, it provides the net grand totals. I know how you calculated expenses. It's the general fund of $150 million plus debt service of over $19 million plus the special purpose funds of over $86 million giving you $256,714,040. But how did you get the figure for revenues of $278,991,718? Does that include the general fund revenues of $168 million plus the debt service of $19 million? Because you never showed the figure for revenues for special purpose funds. And my final comment is, you're facing inflation, which is going to continue. You're facing all kinds of financial pressures. Sooner or later, you're going to have to raise taxes, or you're going to have to unacceptably cut services or lay off personnel. So I think you need to take a look at the budget in that light. There's only, just like reassessment, you could only kick that can down the road for so many years, and you have to address it. Especially these human services areas where you have negative figures, I don't understand how you're going to provide essential services to the community to like 9/11 with these negative figures. So I'll await your comments. Thank you.
Well, Joan, I think we have to, you know, it's a work in progress, but we need to provide those services. And in some cases, we're mandated, many of the cases. It's not a matter of, you know, not desiring to do it or the desire to, you know, no one wants to raise taxes. It would have been a particularly bad time to do it, in my opinion. I think the reassessment will help tremendously. I don't believe that people's taxes will actually go up because of the reassessment. I think we're going to, we have found many, many, many thousands of properties that have never been assessed in Lackawanna County with the help of pictometry and with the help of the on-the-ground people from Tyler Technology going door-to-door in all of the communities. So I, you know, I think taxes will increase, the amount of taxes we collect will increase, but I don't believe individuals' taxes will. I think that's actually an old myth, and that's why everybody kicked that can down the road for so long. Our hope is to not have to raise taxes at all. We're not going to do it this year, and we'll work on it for next year, and we're going to continue to work on this budget to try to get it adjusted so that it's more balanced. But other than that, Commissioner Schirmack? And this was a tough year with the pandemic, tough two years.
It's been a tough, yes, it has. I don't know, Dave, do you have anything to add today before I?
Well, Mary Jo and I had spent the better part of the last several days going through the budget, and the memorandum that I provided shows some results of what our efforts were. And I would suggest you read it. I finished it off yesterday, so otherwise I would have distributed it to you earlier. But go through that and then...
And we can revisit it.
Yeah, that sounds good. I just didn't know if you wanted anything to add. And, you know, because myself, my solicitor PJ, and actually the chairman of our bipartisan budget study committee, we've been working on this as well for weeks. You know, I know you've identified some savings in some stuff that we can do with our health care. And the work that we've done, we've taken and we've looked at, corrected inconsistencies that we found in revenue and expenses, which I provided you. I know we haven't really had a chance to talk to it yet. Including making a full $4.4 million pension fund payment, which I think would be a great thing, we've reduced our budget by $5 million. So between the $5 million that we found, the $4 or $5 million that you found, I don't see at this point how we cannot come up with a balanced budget, which to me would be a remarkable thing to do considering what we've gone through in the past few years. And it's, a balanced budget hasn't happened in a long, long time. So I'm looking forward to hopefully getting that done this year.
Commissioner Domick?
I'm optimistic. I'm optimistic. Not to put too much pressure on Dave while zoning, but I just feel as though between him and Mary Jo, I really do believe that we're going to make significant strides. I think in light of COVID and how we started our administration and where we are now, it is improving. It's just a process. And I do believe that expenses could be cut, but at the same time, like Jerry said, you have to really, you know, you can't just slice and dice because we do have to offer services to our residents. And it's just, I mean, the budget of the county and how much things cost, it's insane. But I do know that Commissioner Schirmack handed, I had an opportunity to look a little bit at his recommendations with his solicitor. I have a few things brewing that I want to take a look at. And then we have, you know, a new CFO also. Just don't, just give us time, is what I'm saying.
Well, again, we, the other thing is, we've never closed during the pandemic. We're open the day after they declared it. We continued to work for two years. We provide the services. The court system continued to work. It's all very expensive, you know, because of the additional part of providing those things. Now, we did get federal money from that and for that, and we spent it accordingly and wisely, and we have allotted it by a noticing firm out of Philadelphia that's so that we're sure that it won't come back on next administrations, future administrations, like many things have happened. Like this building has came back to bite us.
Jerry loves the building.
What's that?
You love this building.
Yeah. I mean, the roof still leaks here, and we have to pay for it.
Yeah, it doesn't leak, it rains.
Will I live long enough to see all the elevators working?
Apartment, Joan?
Will she live long enough to see all of the elevators?
I have no idea. Yeah, actually, it's in the process now, too. Elevators don't work, roof leaks. It's, you know, the floor, we've had to change the floor on two, the floor on two of the floors.
You know, my major concern is when I see a bunch of that, you know, you have...
And Joan, before you comment, at the expense of me, you know, looking extremely green, when I first took office, I'll never forget this, I was in Justin McGregor, Human Resource Director's office, and I don't know who else was there, and we were talking about medical expenses, and they said, "Our medical coverage costs $2 million." And I was like, "A year?" And they said, "A month." And I almost fell out of my chair because until you are in this seat, you don't really see how much things cost. It's, it's like, it's, I'm flabbergasted. So we try.
But many other governments did shut down.
Yeah, we kept going.
They haven't been open. We have not. We've been open since the very beginning of the pandemic.
No, I understand that. My big concern is when you run through the budget and you see something like the 9/11, you know, where expenses are far exceeding anticipated revenues, and you're hoping that, oh, I'm hoping that, you know, this doesn't, you know, get neglected because it's not a cash cow, you know, like other areas might be. You know, all of the areas that had negatives were all in the human services area, you know, every aging agency, you know, 9/11, and similar departments. And you've got to be very sensitive because that's where the most vulnerable population is.
And that's where we spend the most money, Joan.
And I hope so. You know, I mean, I hope that, you know, just looking at the way those numbers filtered out is not going to reflect the priorities that the county is going to pursue in the following year. You know, I mean, because there are certain balls you cannot drop.
Correct.
And those are the ones.
I agree. Thank you.
And I think 911 is one of our, the three of our main concerns, trying to keep people employed. We have a high turnaround because, you know, the wages are low. We tried to work with the union to increase the wages, so...
And again, you have all the contracts, the CBAs, and it's...
Well, here's a suggestion. I've mentioned it to the city before. You've got a lot of colleges in the local area, and they teach a range of subjects, everything from public administration to languages, to finance and accounting. Okay? And I know the city, you know, they are always going after pilot, you know, payment and leave of taxes. But do you realize how much you could get if you partnered with these schools and say, "Hey, you know, I know, you know, you're not going to fork over more money for pilot, so how about this? Why don't you offer free tuition to our employees? They would get training in essential skills that you need for government service. You get a trained employee, and, you know, it's a win-win." You know, there are ways, you know, like you're saying, how you recruit and retain a trained workforce, you know, in this kind of competitive job market. Offer that as an incentive. Partner with these schools. They all love the publicity, you know?
I feel like that's easier said than done.
Well, I think they would.
I understand, Joan.
If you approach them in that light, you know? So you, you know, if you can't raise their salaries beyond a certain point in healthcare and life insurance and all the other fringe benefits, offer this. I would have loved if somebody offered me an opportunity for a free education. It would make me more marketable.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. You're the only one here, Joan. But you're a good one.
You make good points.
I'll, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Oh, second. You must be...
Other question? All in favor? Aye. All in favor? Aye.